Hearings first, but first before that, we're going to do our, as is our custom, we're going to do a pledge and prayer and then we'll move into the public hearings. If you'll rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you bow with me. Emily, Father, thank you for another day. Thank you for all the blessings that you provide to us in our community, in our nation. Just pray for unity and that we can all get together on common ground and just be with us and as our council meets tonight, give us wisdom and insights to what you would have us do. Be with those that are out on the roads in our community, in the public service. Think of our sheriffs and police departments and our fire and EMS and all those who serve the public and just be with them, help them to be safe and sound and make it home each night. Thank you for those that are here tonight and give us wisdom and guidance. We'd be cordial in our meeting and that everyone would make it home safely. It's in your name we pray. Amen. Our first public hearing, I think Colin's going to take the lead on that, getting an ordinance.
Sure. So there is a proposed ordinance that would modify local income tax rates for the county. This is a hearing, meaning that if the public were here, anyone from the public who wanted to speak on that, now would be the time to do so. But before I, we get into that, the notice of this public hearing, which is at seven o'clock today, was published in the news banner on August 18th of this year. So that is outside of 10 days, which is the requirement by statute. So at this point, I would invite anybody who is here to speak on those proposed income tax changes, or at least on the ordinance, to speak on the ordinance and what was published. If you wanted to speak up, now would be the time to do so. Okay. At this point then, hearing no statements from the public, I will close the meeting and we've complied with the code with regard to requirement to have a public meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Colin. Okay, that public hearing is closed. The second public hearing is in regards to 2023 budgets for the Wells County Solid Waste Management District, the Rock Creek Conservancy in Wells County. Believe these were published as well in the paper. Dates so stipulated. Does anyone have any comments on what was published for these notices to taxpayers on those budgets? Yes?
Is this where I speak about the board pay for 65 for all boards? Is what I was told. I think really me and Lisa are sorry. She wants to, you don't have to do that during a public hearing if you don't want to. It's about board pay for Peter Bowa, around $65 for all boards. She was paying her board more. It'll be addressed later.
Yeah, we'll address that later. Okay. Hearing no discussion, we'll close that. We don't need any motions on that, correct? Okay. So that public hearing is closed. Okay, first thing on our agenda is the minutes from the August 2, August 10, August 11, August 16, August 18 budget meetings. Did all council members receive minutes and any changes or amendments to those minutes?
No changes. I make a recommendation, we accept.
Got a motion to accept. Are you second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Do you have the transfers? Believe that was 7:00.
Yes.
Okay, we do have a transfer. Have that in front of them. We have from the state opioid. Do you like, go ahead and give us an update on what you got there.
I'm appearing for Judge Kerkhoff. I'm Lisa Jaski from the Wells Circuit Court. He senses apologies. He's at a ballgame tonight and going to be heading for a three-day jury judicial conference. Wells Circuit Court is asking for a transfer in a grant. It's opioids grant. It's run by, let me see, Family, I can't, thank you, Family Centered Services, and they have requested that we move $10,000 out of salaries into a participant assistance line item. That grant is ending at the end of the month. We're closing it out and it's going to be the last billing as of September 29th. And we want to make sure there's enough money in that line item for bills that are going to be coming in. So right now it just has $100 and we need significantly more to cover.
Anyone have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion for that transfer. We have a, we have a motion?
I'll second.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's approved. Okay, does everyone have the additionals in front of them? And any questions, all in those? Sheriff's running out of gas. Any other questions from council on what these are? Nate, wouldn't you want to explain yours? Your transfer?
It's for drainage.
Oh, I'm sorry, drainage.
It's the drainage project.
301.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, that's what that is. I know it. Thank you.
All right, what did I do? No, what it is, a transfer from that State Road 301 fund. We're paying for part of the drainage improvements for the local tracks project, so the Adam Street extension down to Hoosier Highway. We pulled the drainage work out of the grant funds because we've been running an overage right now on paper. So to try to get the drainage work done at a lower cost, Jared was working with us to do that, essentially working with us, really he's been running it really almost solo. So kudos to Jared for what he's done to make that happen. But since it's a county legal tile, he's been working through that. So we're using to pay for that, it's less than what we would have actually paid going through NDOT and doing it through the NDOT project. So this is just for us to pay for that from the same fund we would have if it were part of the actual grant fund.
Will that money go back to 301? Will it be anything coming back to go back to 301?
From that, essentially what we're doing is we're just pulling part of the money from that 301 account out now, early and just paying for a piece of the project. So what we've done is taken the drainage and treating it as a pull-ahead project. And so we're just doing that now directly.
Is this the Adam Street?
Yes. So, well, it's the 301 relinquishment fund. And so that's the title of that fund. So those monies were committed as the local match.
From 301?
No, nope. So the only reason 301 is listed is because that's the name of the fund. Yep, towards this project. Yep. And it was always, that was always the intent of the local match for that, was to come from the State Road 301 relinquishment. So, yep, sorry, kind of confusing, but it is a pull-ahead project for that.
That makes it more clear. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Thanks.
All right, any other questions from council on these additionals? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion?
Second.
In a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, those are passed. Sheriff, you're up.
You have my other two transfers. I didn't hear them discussed. Gotcha. Thank you.
They get them.
Okay. Just didn't know if I had to answer to them. You got it. Okay. We have 90 inmates in jail. Thirty-two of those are pretrial Superior, 31 are pretrial Circuit, 13 F-6, and 7 DOC. I handed out the monthly activity report for August. As you can see, compared to last year, about every category is up, including the number of inmates booked. Meals served in the average population this time last year was 62 inmates and for August it's 92. So it's been a pretty busy summer, very active summer. The monthly report of income generated for, through, up through August is detailed. I don't see anything out of the ordinary. We're right on track to what we normally bring in as far as revenue items. The only other thing, I gave an update to the commissioners earlier on the jail project. They're moving along. We're pretty much working in almost every part of the jail at this point. So it's been quite taxing on us and the staff trying to work through that. But the new addition of the intake in Sallyport Garage is on track to be completed hopefully by the end of this month. And with some inspections and, you know, the approval through their inspection process, but we also have to get the state jail inspector, fire inspector, and everybody else out. We're looking maybe the first or second week of October before we can move into that addition. That'll, that'll provide a lot of relief for us in our daily operations once we can do that. But everything else is moving along. We had a construction meeting today. Just trying to keep everybody and all the subs in line with what we got to do, no major hiccups or anything at this point. So we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel here. So hopefully we get, we get pretty close and looking like still at project to be completed towards the end of the year. So a few more months and we'll hopefully get there, so.
Wait before the snow flies, right?
Yeah, yes, definitely. But we got good heat and good air conditioning now, so.
Can anybody park on your pavement now?
What's that?
You get a park on your pavement?
Yeah, we have less people taking up parking spots at the jail from construction workers. And so our grass isn't in the best shape because we've had to park on the grass a lot this year, so. But there's always next year. It'll grow back, so.
Okay.
Anything else? Appreciate it. Thank you.
Connor. Evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Again. And I don't know if you guys are super interested in this one, but I have one copy, so you can get one. This is a scheduled jail project. Eighteen months or so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Math is hard. Okay. First document I wanted to go over with you guys is the bid tab. This is where we are to date. Previous versions of this that we've put out did not include bid packages one and two, and I'll get to why that is here momentarily. At this point, all of our bid packages have been bid, which is great. However, it does sound like maybe up to three of them will be rebid or there'll be some, something that we need to do to them, just to get, get the budget to where we want it to be. And I'll just go through each bid package as we come through it now. Bid package one was the pre-engineered metal building and steel erection package. That was James S. Jackson Company was the apparent low and that has been awarded. Bid package two was for the salt storage building. That item was approved to be a single or a sole spec supplier. And really the reason for that is because when we went out for bids for the salt storage buildings, they come in all kinds of different shapes and sizes. And so it made sense that we found the one that we like, the look of, how it's constructed, and no one else could really match that spec without making material changes to the building. The next item is concrete. We're thrilled that we got that number down. They shaved about, Bowman bid the first time, they were the only bidder. We went back out for the bid. They shaved about $200,000 off of their number. So that was a benefit to the county. Next item is another sole spec supplier, and that's for the precast concrete planks that will make up the deck of the four mezzanines in the building. And the reason why we sole spec that is it was the only one, it's the only company we expected to bid on it. They were also the basis of design and helped on the front end. And so it made sense to work with them. We've done a lot of work with them, too. Masonry, the apparent low is Schmucker. CME is the apparent low for General Trades. They bid the first round and then they also bid the second round. We didn't receive any other bids either time. And in talking with Mike Swan, the owner's representative for this, he said in the event that we didn't get a competitive bid the second time through, that he was comfortable awarding to CME or to anyone else that was the only bid that was responsive two times. You know, we've spent a couple of months advertising this and talking to people and being out there, and this is just a bid package that we had to lump a whole bunch of things together to make it big enough for anyone to be interested in it.
Did that bid change at all?
It went up, but I also added scope to it. I moved the miscellaneous metals and steel erection into that package. It is about 30% higher than what we are anticipating the bid, but in the market that we're in, I think that's okay. Overhead doors, Robert Dietrich Company was the only bid. We did not receive bids from anyone else the first time. And because this was the only bid this time, the commissioners have asked that we rebid this item. It is also significantly higher than what we were anticipating it should be. The glass and glazing has been awarded to Hull Aluminum. Drywall and acoustical, it's been, or the apparent low is Jones Commercial Interiors. Their number is significantly low, and I think that it warrants, and going through their bid with a fine-tooth comb, making sure that our scopes line up and that everything's covered, so we don't have a surprise down the road. Having worked with them quite a bit, though, I don't anticipate that they've missed anything. I think Strom is just a bigger machine to feed. Flooring has been awarded to Jack Lorry Group. Painting, we did get a local bid on this this time. FNS did not bid the first time through. This did go back out for rebid and FNS is our apparent low. Fire protection is the only thing that went up in price when we did the rebid. Shambaw had initially bid this project. They had opted not to rebid. We did reach out to them specifically, have a conversation, let them know it's being rebid, why it's being rebid. It was because they were the only bidder on it. But current and VFP did bid it the second time. VFP's number's about $15,000 higher than where Shambaw was after the first bid. Mechanical has been awarded to Shambaw. Electrical has been awarded to 4TC. And if anyone's driven by there, Haybig is on site and they're moving dirt. So they have been awarded the excavation package. Paving has been awarded to Brooks. The last two bid packages are highlighted in yellow. We did not receive bids the second time. I do, I am going to go back out to Hoosier Fence and RNC Fence and Arrow and a couple of others and just say, hey, guys, we are rebidding this one more time. Why haven't you bid? And just to try to better understand that, I think that the 72,000 is high. I think it represents the upper limit of where we might be going. We've also talked about maybe breaking this up and just having a contractor supply the gate and maybe the highway department puts in their own fence or something. So there are a lot of options on the table for that. And then the second one here is Harlow. They did bid the first time, bid the second time. Their number remained unchanged. I think the general consensus is that we all feel like that number's pretty hefty for what it is. And so we're looking at maybe some alternative delivery methods for that. What does all of this mean? And I think everyone's interested to know where we're heading. I know that I've been asked to provide a final contract price at this meeting. However, having just received bids on Thursday and still needing to go through a lot of this and scrub the bids and make sure that the scopes line up with where we think they should, I think that before your next meeting, we can provide a guaranteed maximum price. I also need to probably get with Colin and Barnes and Thorntonburg on what does that amendment to our contract look like? What does it need to, what needs to be included in what format so that we do everything according to the law here? The number we're heading to is somewhere between 9.4 and 9.5 million, which I'm also happy to report is the number we've been dealing with since about March. You guys have any questions?
So you'll have solid, solid and everything decided next month?
Yep.
But we can go ahead and put a cap on the not to exceed, yeah, as a 9.5 number?
I'm comfortable with that because the things that are, were in yellow or out for rebid, I think represent the upper limit. And so I think we've created the upper limit of this project.
Okay. All right, any more questions for Colin?
Connor, is the Stress Corps, the precast, is that out of Decatur or is that the one up?
It's not. They're out of, somewhere in the region, maybe up Mishawaka or South Bend.
When the landscaping, is there a bunch of trees or something need to be planted or what's all involved with that?
It's a handful. I'm still trying to wrap my mind around their number.
Sounds like a lot.
There is quite a bit of seating. I think that they probably were bidding seating 20 acres and we're not going to have that much seating. I mean, the whole front is mostly developed and the back should be kind of left alone for the most part. And then we do have a bunch of seating on both sides of Adam Street for the sewer and water work and, but it doesn't really make up $187,000 in my mind.
There's gats out there and help you out.
Sean from the highway department has proposed that maybe they buy the seating equipment because it'll help in their operations and they'd be able to hold on to it after the project. And then maybe we use our manpower and take it out of our construction activities fee or our reimbursable fees. That's just an option that's been thrown out there. We need to check into if we can do that or not.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Awesome. Thank you.
So, so you've heard what Connor has proposed for a not to exceed number of 9.5. And so if we can get a motion to that effect, then at least we'll know where we're capped at and hopefully we can push, he can push that down a little bit. But then the financing can at least start moving forward.
I'll make a motion to approve. I take seat 9.5 million.
You have a motion? Are you second?
Second.
Second? Any further discussion? Favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so at least we have a not to exceed number. Okay. Andrew.
May I request a little bit of a hybrid request? As you may recall, you approved my budget request wherein I included a full-time 4D assistant as opposed to the part-time assistant that I have now. My part-time assistant is retiring, I guess, September 23rd. And so I'd like to hire somebody full-time now rather than have to wait till the first of the year or try and hire somebody part-time and then change them to full-time. So the request I'm bringing to you is to give me permission to hire somebody full-time commencing October the 17th. That would require a transfer of money. We will have some money left over in the budget for the part-time assistant who will be leaving. And so Lisa will be creating a new line item for a, I guess, a third full-time 4D assistant. We would transfer the 3,023, yeah, from the part-time to the full-time line items. And then I would like permission to pay the balance of the full-time person's salary through the end of the year out of the 4D incentive fund, which as you may recall is not an appropriated fund. It would not require an additional appropriation, but does require your permission to allow me to do that. That would allow me to go ahead and get my full-time person hired, hopefully, like I say, by mid-October.
I think that sounds reasonable, but I don't know if anybody has any opposition to that.
The law understands where all the.
By October 17th, do you already have somebody you think that's interested that will be willing to start that? I mean.
No, but we have already put it in the newspaper. I have already advertised it in the newspaper in anticipation of your approval, Colin. So we're starting the process. We're hoping to be able to get hired, somebody hired and started.
And we had already approved that at budget time to start.
Yep.
So that's just moving it up a little bit. So entertain a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion, we allow Andy to pursue this position and pay that position for the rest of the year, full-time.
I'll second.
Second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so at least we have a not to exceed number. Okay. Andrew.
May I request a little bit of a hybrid request? As you may recall, you approved my budget request wherein I included a full-time 4D assistant as opposed to the part-time assistant that I have now. My part-time assistant is retiring, I guess, September 23rd. And so I'd like to hire somebody full-time now rather than have to wait till the first of the year or try and hire somebody part-time and then change them to full-time. So the request I'm bringing to you is to give me permission to hire somebody full-time commencing October the 17th. That would require a transfer of money. We will have some money left over in the budget for the part-time assistant who will be leaving. And so Lisa will be creating a new line item for a, I guess, a third full-time 4D assistant. We would transfer the 3,023, yeah, from the part-time to the full-time line items. And then I would like permission to pay the balance of the full-time person's salary through the end of the year out of the 4D incentive fund, which as you may recall is not an appropriated fund. It would not require an additional appropriation, but does require your permission to allow me to do that. That would allow me to go ahead and get my full-time person hired, hopefully, like I say, by mid-October.
I think that sounds reasonable, but I don't know if anybody has any opposition to that.
The law understands where all the.
By October 17th, do you already have somebody you think that's interested that will be
And so it mirrors what we did recently for 2023. So there was an adjustment that was done and we, Lisa and I did a lot of work with the state auditor to get these right and so to get all taken care of. And so this is a reflection of all that work that was done and this will just keep things going next year as it went this year in the right direction.
Buckets, right?
So we need a motion to approve what that ordinance.
Ordinance 2022-16.
I'll make that motion.
Second. You have a motion and second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we've passed that. Okay, next up, Chad.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm here to present, I believe Colin has the ordinance here. I believe you guys received the information regarding an ordinance to, for reauthorization to the Northeast Indiana Regional Development Authority, the Northeast RDA. So the RDA is made up of the commissioners and the mayors in the first and second-class cities. So they are the actual RDA. They then have appointed a board, a five-member board. Those five members have representation of Wells County has a representative on the board, Adams County, Allen County, DeKalb County. Trying to remember who the fifth person is. But there's five members. And so some of you remember back in 2015 when they went around to sign up all the counties for that membership to the RDA. That was an eight-year commitment to being a member of the RDA for Northeast Indiana. That is expiring next year. The reason why we are coming to you a year ahead of time is because of the ready funding that was received by the Northeast Indiana RDA from the state of Indiana, the $50 million. We are, we have projects that were put into the ready plan about a year ago. There were seven projects that were put into that plan. Some of those will be moving forward to seek funding. And the reason for the requirement of re-upping to the RDA is because that funding will move past that next-year timeline. So, so they have asked every county to move forward at this time with re-authorizing the membership to the RDA. No fee, no requirements of anything other than just approving the ordinance. The ordinance request would extend it for another eight years. That eight years would commence at the expiration of the next year when that, once that's set to expire. So that eight years would start next year. So it would take you from 2023 to 2031. So here to answer any questions.
Does that's the ability to receive the money as a county?
Correct. We would not be able to pitch projects because if we're not a member to the RDA, we would not be able to receive money from the RDA. The Regional Strategic Planning Commission, that was a legislatively created position or a commission, is currently working to try and get long-term sustainable funding to the RDA. Right now, the RDA has received two buckets, the $42 million. They were one of three regions, we were one of three regions to receive those funds. That helped with, Wells County was the last one to get a project approved. That was the Downtown Plaza here in Bluffton and the Amphitheater in Ossian. Those were those. We have three hopeful projects that will move forward in this ask. Hopefully, we'll get them all funded at least to some level. And if there's other projects that were in the plan, we'll try to get those funded as well.
Is this the one Mike Pence?
The 42, correct. Yep.
Okay. I think we just need a simple motion to approve the extension of the RDA.
I'll make a motion.
You have a motion? You have a second?
I'll second.
You have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chad. Okay, Kada, ladies.
Hello, I'm Molly Hoag. I'm the Kada's vice president this year and Angie Diles with me as the, she's our local coordinator. And we are here to present our annual report for Citizens Against Drug Abuse. You have this in the additional appropriation, but what you're looking at is our annual spreadsheet. At the top, we have our total fees collected from 2021. And these fees come in from drug and alcohol offenses in Wells County. And as a board, it's our task to re-administer the funds that we receive to go back into the county and try to fight substance use and abuse in Wells County through the areas of education prevention, treatment intervention, and then also judicial. And so you can see on this spreadsheet, they're color-coded by the sections that the grants were submitted. So the green is education prevention, the blue is treatment intervention, and then orange is judicial. The state asked that we spend 25% of our funds in those three categories. Other, an administration is also within, but we cannot spend over that amount in administration. This year, our requests were all under the qualifications, so we were able to grant almost everybody completely except for in education prevention. The requests were a little bit over in that amount to meet that 25%. So those requests in education prevention, we made an even percentage cut across the board for those grants. But in treatment intervention and judicial, everyone is able to receive their full amount. But you will notice if you look at what that minimum amount or that 25% amount is, treatment intervention and judicial don't actually meet that amount yet because we did not get enough submissions for that amount. So at the very bottom of the spreadsheet, we have $2,546.91 remaining that we're going to roll over into 2023 grants because we did not have the request to fulfill that 25%. So I welcome any questions about this or comments.
And you're not able to put that amount up into the education prevention, correct?
In years past, we actually were allowed to request that we do that. And the state this year has said that is not an option. So the one option that we have chosen is to roll it over into next year. So we'll just beef up essentially how much money we can give next year and maybe we'll get more requests across the board next year that we can use it. So it will stay here in Wells County. It will just roll into next year's.
Been through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're up to other business. And I think the first thing is a, the salary ordinance, referring to the $15 an hour for hourly employees. Shall I read that whole paragraph or sentence there? So it says hourly employees shall be paid up to, paid to a maximum of $15 per hour except in special cases where the department head may request additional compensation per hour and the county council approves the request. So that is what we are, we talked about that at budget time and we approved that at budget time. Now we're approving the ordinance, correct?
Correct. And I also, on page two in the prosecutor section, I went ahead and made another page and updated it with his request. I put part-time staff assistant eliminated on 9/30/2023 and 40 staff assistant number 40 is effective 10/17/2023.
Motion to that effect. Okay, we need a motion to approve that ordinance change then.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance change.
Okay, you have a motion? Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second? Further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Lastly, along similar lines, but a discussion on the surveyor compensation. I think we've all just been aware that should our surveyor get registered, his salary, I believe per state statute, would then be fixed at one and one-half times that of a non-registered surveyor. So the issue is when does that become in effect? And I had a discussion with our surveyor and told him I would bring that up. As it sits now, should he become a registered surveyor, let's say in the first half of next year, he would still have to wait until the next salary cycle, which would be then the following January for that to become in effect. So the discussion is open to the floor on what everybody thinks about the possibility of leaving it there or making it effective once he gets his designation as a registered surveyor.
Where was that original rule made and how? Is that state ICE or is that?
To make it one and a half times?
No. Well, my question is specific to the timing. Is that Indiana code or is that just something that the council arbitred, set in the past or?
I think, I think we did it that way because we, at the time, make sure we have, make sure we kind of funded during budget period. I don't know if it's in the Indiana code that it has to be done immediately. I don't think it does. It's just the 1.5 is what's in the Indiana code that I'm aware of. The timing of it, I think, is open to whatever council decides.
The way we did it last time gave it.
When we originally.
So what we did last time, we make it January, let's we change it to nine.
Yeah, exactly. It would be, yeah.
So it's kind of what we did last time, as you said, be effective in January. Just, I think my happenstance is just the way that the salary would go all the way to January of the next year following certification.
I don't, not support what's being discussed. However, in two or three years, we could be in a very tight budget situation that we couldn't afford another $20,000 in surveyor salary. And we're establishing a rule that may put us in a corner in the future.
I think that's why we had it set this way. We discussed it several councils ago that we went that way.
Can I give you a little bit of the history?
Sure.
But the reason that that is in there, there is another state statute that says that you can't change an elected official's salary in the middle. Since that time, for a couple of specific offices, surveyor that gets licensed, coroner that becomes a doctor, whatever, there is statute now that says you can change it as long as it's in your salary ordinance. As long as it's spelled out in your salary ordinance, you can change it if it's for that reason. There are only a couple of offices that apply to. So, but that was the reason that it was put in there then is there was a fear, that was prior to that statute change, that you couldn't change it in the middle of the year. Well, you can't with today's statute with state board of council opinion and everything. You can change it in the middle of the year if it's for that reason and if it is in your salary ordinance. Here's the unlicensed pay, here's the licensed pay. That's kind of the history of why that's in there. Is there anything that gives us the flexibility?
That's what I was thinking.
That point that it's passed that we can do a salary ordinance change at that point? I mean, we don't need to change this, but we could say, let's say he passes it in February, can we do a salary ordinance in February and increase it at that point?
I don't know that you could. I don't know that you could change the salary ordinance for an elected official. The wording of, do you know what I'm saying?
It's already in the ordinance.
I know, but, but it says that it should take place next year. So either, you either have to do one or the other. I don't know.
So we can't change it at that point?
Just because of he's an elected official.
Couldn't say may, it may change and then make it depending on how we sit in a, from a budgetary standpoint? Legal?
So what you're, you're asking, can you change someone's salary midstream if you had an ordinance basically like, almost like a circuit breaker type thing? Like if this happens, then it kicks up to a certain amount? Is that what your, the question is?
We want the flexibility to be able to do that, but we don't want to be locked into have to.
So it's not going to be a decision tonight. If it's passed in February, we could do a salary ordinance change in February to then up it to the appropriate amount.
So what he's asking is can we put the word may in there? Now it says it will go in January, but if he puts the word may in there, does that give?
Give us the flexibility from a budgetary standpoint?
I haven't seen the ordinance, so I don't, I don't, I don't quite, it may, we, I don't know what you mean by who may do what. The council may essentially bump up the salary to comply with state law if that certification is obtained.
We have to at the next January with it, or the next budget cycle.
We know that we would have to.
We have to.
At least the next year, right? And so the question is.
Can we have the flexibility of putting it in the earlier year if, if the budget allows?
If there's a statutory prohibition against changing salaries of elected officials out in, after January 1st, then I think you're.
But I think we're talking about, we, we could change the, this ordinance to say we shall once that he gets the designation, he or she gets a designation that says we have to anyhow. It's just a matter of when it happens.
But we're safe. Safe the way it is, it's implied right here, I'm assuming.
It wouldn't take.
Yeah, so we're safe right now, the way this is put in here from the conversation we're talking about versus changing it at this point.
Yeah, now it would not change midyear.
Yeah.
I'm always open to creative ways about this, but I would want to do a little bit more research and I'm happy to, happy to talk with you all about that. If there's a way to do it and I can find that out, I'd be more than happy to spell that out for you. As I sit here right now, I.
Doesn't have to be done tonight, so, yeah. Won't we give you time to review?
I'll send a memo out to everybody on that.
Because part of my position would be is if somebody goes out, I know at our company you got to earn that designation, you don't wait nine more months to get a raise for it. So if we can have the financial wherewithal to make it happen, that would be ideal in my view, but.
As long as we're not, as long as we're not forced to because we might not have the money.
But we can't afford $25,000? This county's got a lot of issues.
I agree, but.
I mean, we got rainy day money, we got plenty.
The other thing I think we need to remember is, is this IC code? Is that where you got this information? I mean, we, we got to make sure we're going by Indiana law.
That's what Colin can get to.
Yeah.
Because we have to come up with money by the next cycle anyway automatically.
Are you close?
I'm closer than that.
Okay.
Keep in mind, I mean, if I were to leave Harvard, the next person is caught.
They could be, yeah.
If they were a licensed surveyor.
Automatically.
Your salary.
Automatically.
They would automatically get paid then.
If they were registered at that point, yeah, they'd have to automatically.
So.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the, I don't want to sound greedy or I don't want to sound, it's really, the code says you shall pay this one and a half times.
Sure.
I mean, it's just.
When are you going, when are you going to take that jump?
All right, let's, let's table that till next month and give Colin at least an opportunity to review it. Hopefully we can just, I mean, it's not going to happen in the next month anyhow, so that would give us, you know, we'll bring it back up, but, okay. Kelly, you had something you want to talk about?
Yep.
I want to open up my office. I'm sorry, it's kind of distracting, but basically they have said, you know, last year we were doing vendors and so I just pulled this out. Our assessors, like all the assessors that I've.
Back and share it with her.
I think I have another one for myself.
So basically, the reason I had asked in my budget last year to bump up the pay for the Pita Boa people, the members, is because I had the Level 3, which is Judy, and.
the Pita Boa people, the members, is because I had the level three with this Judy, and I had experience at that time of a level two, he had just let his certification go. But the knowledge that he had was valuable to, to the Wells County. So we would like to incentivize, however I say that, to the new board members to get some levels, you know, so they can understand how we assess, because I don't know that they totally understand everything. I mean, there's a lot to our job, and they're having to, you know, come up with values and things, and they, they kind of need to know what evidence we're showing them. I think it's a really important job, so that's why I'm saying taking their pay back down to 65, and maybe I misunderstood the email, I did ask Lisa to clarify a little bit, because, you know, I don't want to just let it go. It's not going to affect me because I won't be here, but it's hard enough getting people on the board, and then if you lower the pay, and if you can get someone with levels, that would be great. So I just wanted you to see, these are the ones that did reply to the email that had gotten sent out. You know, I didn't send this email out, it just was, I was on the chain, and so they'd made up the spreadsheet of the responses. So some people are paying more for levels, and some people are just, hey, you know, they tell me they're, literally they're a couple hours, they still get the same amount of pay, whether they, they're five minutes or two hours. So if the people don't show up or things like that, they still just get paid the same amount.
Pay per meeting for the Pita Boa members?
Yeah, pay per meeting. Some of them, as you can see, are per hour, so the lady who was doing this, she put how much that would have been. So like, if, if you just read toward the side, it kind of tells you what the differences are.
Kelly, I've got a really short memory, but are not all three new people on the board, or is it just two?
There's three people.
But are they new?
No, ours is still the same.
So there's two new people on the board.
Right, and one gentleman is working on a level one, he, at least he says he is, and then we have Judy, who you guys have appointed, she is a level three, so.
Taking her down.
What's our pay now?
$100 a meeting.
Per person?
Per person, yeah.
All of them get the same?
Everybody's getting the same, because I didn't think it was important to like designate the levels, but maybe, you know, if you look at other counties, that's what they're doing.
We just put it as the board.
It was stated that everybody, yeah.
Across the board.
Right, all boards. I just don't want to do that to Laura. I mean, it's going to be hard enough if those people decide they don't want to do it, and then she's got, you know, or they, well, why'd I get $100 last time and now I'm only getting 65? It's not worth my time. I don't want that for her. I mean, I, I won't be there. I'm just saying.
How many meetings are?
Not very many. I mean, the most I would say is five, but that would be a very busy year.
And the new people are people that have asked to be on the board, correct?
Well, the commissioners were given some applications, and they reviewed them, and they picked the best out of what they were given. That's, you know.
So those people wanted to be on the board?
Yeah. I just want you to take that into consideration, because if I didn't say anything, I really wouldn't be doing Wells County any good. But this is why I said 100, because it's kind of the middle price of everybody's, what they were paying. And it had been 65 for, I don't know, like I said, I look back, I have to, records from 2008, and that's what they were getting paid.
And the other exception to this rule that we talked about previously is also the election board. Make it payment.
Did that sound that good? They were, I think they had a.
I have a question. Did you say that?
Two times per year, it's about six times a time.
Even if they don't come?
If the taxpayer doesn't show up.
Oh, oh.
Not the board member?
But the board member is there. All set for people to come and then. Right. No call, no show, no, I mean. Right.
We don't know what happened.
They've decided they didn't want to go to the board. Right, they, I don't know if an emergency happened. Yeah, I, no, I just, I misunderstood.
She's, Judy's been on that board for quite some time.
Budget cut now, sorry.
So do you call yours a per diem? Your board, her board meetings, or, I mean, do they do anything? I don't know what they call, do they, is it per board meeting? Is that how you call it?
And you, your office schedules those meetings, correct?
Yes.
You call them.
So you can decide, okay, how many of these need to occur?
Right, and we, you know, we try to put more on so that we can keep them there long, you know what I mean?
Right.
But a lot of times we don't get responses from the taxpayer. We'll send out something, try to settle it, and it just, it takes a lot longer, so you end up calling, emailing, even with all that, we're not sure if the taxpayer is willing to do that. So by then, we need to send it to the board because we've got to.
Right, that's why you have it.
Only so long to send them.
Previously. Why don't we take this up at our next meeting? It'll give us some time to think about it.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, but yeah, thanks for bringing it up to our attention, though. Okay, any other business from the, looks like we have a participant.
With the, with the number that you guys voted on for the highway route.
Yep.
I, when we originally started this, we had had soft costs entered into it, probably representatives' wages or his salary, and with what you guys voted on, we're going to come up short with, you know, the supply of building, furniture, and other items needed. So I think voting on 9.5 is probably a little bit low because I confirmed to Connor that the soft costs were not included in that number.
It's just the construction cost that you're missing, a couple of the other costs that he was going to include in his presentation.
And we were, the reason I found out, I know why we took it out, so he didn't make 3% in the purchase of our soft costs. So it's actually going to save us 3%, but we have, we can't deal with it at 9.5, 9.5 is just for the construction.
Now, my understanding that soft costs are traditionally legal fees and design fees and bond fees and those types of things. If you're talking about fixtures, that's different.
Okay, well, I'm speaking of furnishings, shelving, equipment.
Okay, that's, that's different. Those aren't soft costs. So furniture and fixtures is, is the, the point.
Yeah, here, we think that amount's going to be. I'm actually pricing things out now, but I don't, I can't get quotes off everything, and I need to look at Connor a little on purchasing to see how it needs to be done. I think originally when we first started, months ago, we were looking at about $385,000. That was months ago, and things have changed, but.
I guess we need to see a list of what that all is, including and all that.
I have several bids, or not bids, but I have several requests for quotes out there. I'm just not getting back as fast as I wanted to by the time you wanted it. But we, we sat down with a company to give us an estimate on furnishings, even which we think is going to be one of the larger costs. And I have equipment that needs to be replaced or purchased, and I have quotes out for those. I have several back, but I don't have a total number for you, but I just don't think we should vote on that 9.5 until we have the solid number.
We already did.
We're still in the same meeting, so it's still settled.
There's no way you can use some of the stuff you have currently to make do for a while?
We're using some of the stuff that we have to make do, but a lot of what we have will not work. We actually come down to the courthouse to get chairs because our chairs and our desks were falling apart, so we come and got the used chairs from the courthouse, so we get a sit on the floor. That's what we deal with.
So. Chairs are falling apart, so.
I've been to the break room several times, I can testify that it's not the best.
So now certainly we don't want to spring out on anybody, but just when we heard the number and the vote, I was trying to re-Connor, and I think he was, he didn't have everything for you that you needed for that vote.
I know, but he was expecting a vote either, we didn't discuss it before we proposed.
Colin, can we do a remotion to, I'm sorry, can we do a remotion to pull that back out? The motion's been approved.
This was earlier today when Connor was here?
Yes.
I mean, we're still in an open meeting, so I don't, I don't see why it can't be all Connor's not here, so it seems a lot.
So.
But yeah, if, if we don't, then we've got to hear it again, either at a, the next meeting or at another, at a special meeting.
Which we got to.
They don't know what we have.
Of course, the next meeting we have to wait anyway.
Would it have to be published, would it? What's that? Would it have to be published, would it?
And not to exceed again?
I mean, if we can, if Connor came and shared October meeting with all your firm numbers, is that still early enough for bond counsel and everything that you need? I mean, I, I think that maybe that's your schedule, kind of brunch for the timing?
Yeah, I mean, the sooner we can do it, it gives us a little more flexibility as far as rates and things like that.
Absolutely.
Lock in, and the later we wait, you know, if rates go up, they go up, and then that costs us all money, so.
Oh, yeah.
So that's the dilemma. But yeah, if we don't have everything in there, and obviously you can't run an office without anything, I, I get that.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a significant amount of equipment that's, that's necessary in the new facility, it just isn't in there. High pieces we have, we don't pan out.
Yeah, well, we're carrying over, say, our welder, our torches, a lot of the tools that are still usable and good, we're carrying those over. Those will be included, but it's very minimal, but what we can carry over.
Steve, could we simplify, simply clarify our original vote that says that it excludes furniture and fixtures?
I think it might be a little bit more than just furniture and fixtures and what he's referring to, I don't think for the well.
Just for that part, I don't know if we can address what bonding did?
No, that's what we need to make sure we're.
Get that off the table to the meeting. What else we did?
Yeah, we can push it back again.
Well, that's on them, I mean, that's time frame.
Yeah. You think you can have it on before October?
If I can get the vendors to get a job, yeah. That's my issue, is having vendors to come back and this, but they want to give me like a 10-day quote. Everybody wants 10-day quotes, so they cannot guarantee a price, and I don't even have a line to be able to purchase these items out of to make that 10-day quote good, so I could change after 10 days, and I don't have a way to pick one.
Yeah, but at least you could get us in the neighborhood, yeah, and then, and that's what we need for a not-to-exceed.
Yes.
Something, you know.
Because right now what you've got is a stack of probably about 20% of these pending quotes and money in the minority, money good, but.
But even if they're expired, you have an idea what they should be.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's shoot for that at, at the next meeting, get us something as solid as you can get, you can get, that way we can work with bond counsel.
We need to do an official remotion to withdraw the motion that we passed, Colin?
You can put that, just put that same issue on the agenda next time, so long as bond counsel knows that there may be some slight modifications, and I can let them know that, that that's out there. That would be what I'm more worried about right now, is that somehow that they'll take, they're going to take some action regarding that, and it's still, it's still an open issue.
Officially in this meeting, it's understood that that 9.5 is now to take.
Well, it's the building costs and then, but we can make that clear to bond counsel.
Yeah.
And they can still potentially lock in a rate, because they said we can make it, making, you can always go down in costs, so. But if a 9.5 is not a 9.5, we need to reclarify this motion. So I don't know who made the motion.
I made the motion, Michelle.
All right, won't you revise your motion then?
So who tells?
I don't know that you have to have a number solid, but with knowing that soft costs were not included, so that we need to revisit this next meeting.
But that's just construction costs, you're not the, the other parts of furnishing and such.
Okay, so I'll give this a shot. So I'll revise my previous motion for an upper limit of not to exceed of 9.5 million to state that that was for construction costs only and not for materials within side furniture, any office supplies that may be necessary for a functioning highway garage, that those costs will be determined at our next meeting in October.
Got a motion?
I think that's good.
Okay, all right. We have a motion in a second. We'll re-vote on this. All in favor, aye? Aye. Okay, opposed, all right.
All right.
No, thanks for the clarification.
I know we talked about it before.
Yeah, and I know that he was trying to save some money by you getting quotes, so he didn't.
Yep, all right, anyone else?
I've got one more thing.
Okay, go ahead.
The left and common counsel tonight is hopefully approving a 911 in a local agreement between the city and the county. I'll be passing that agreement along to this body for us to vote on in October. Please review it, let me know. Commissioner Van Rom, a lot of work in this, it's been almost a year to get this agreement done between the city and county. Colin worked a lot on it as well, so please, as I pass it around, we want to make sure, because the board of works for the city is going to approve it as well, the commissioner, so we'll be, we'll be the last body to approve this. So I'll be happy to answer any questions after I send it out, the agreement and what it means.
Okay.
So just so everybody will look out for it.
Anyone from the audience anymore? Anything else you want to bring up? Okay, thanks for coming. Need a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Motion second, second, favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.